Board members, please come join us. This March 31, 2016, regular meeting number 16 of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Island Creek Elementary School Chorus under the direction of Ashley Cuthbertson. Just beautiful. Thank you so much. Thank you, parents, for sharing your talented children with us tonight.
Madam Chair, I don't know if Mike McCrane is here tonight, but I was going to congratulate. There he is. Congratulations, Mike, the principal at Island Creek Elementary School. And thank you, parents, again. A little secret is, Island Creek Elementary School, and Mike knows this, is my neighborhood elementary school. So I drive by Island Creek, and actually, some of the children up there are in my neighborhood. So what a great school, like so many of our schools in the system. So thank you, parents, for having your children here tonight.
Item 1.02, no, we won't do that. Item 1.03, announcements. We have a few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. I will now call on Mr. Press for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll have two announcements this evening, the first of which is that the board will be recognizing Mathematics Awareness Month in April. Mathematics Awareness Month is held each year in April to increase public understanding of and appreciation for mathematics, sponsored by the Joint Policy Board for Mathematics. The goal is to increase the visibility of mathematics as a field of study and to communicate the power and intrigue in mathematics to a larger audience. The 2016 theme is the Future of Prediction, a look at how math and statistics are the future of prediction and how they provide insights and drive innovation. And secondly, the board will be recognizing Autism Awareness Month in April. Autism is a complex developmental disability that affects an individual's social interaction and communication. It is known as a spectrum disorder because it affects each individual in different ways and to varying degrees. Autism Awareness Month, celebrated every year in April, provides an opportunity for families, friends, and local communities to raise public awareness about and acceptance of autism. Sponsored by the Autism Society of America, the ASA, this year's goal is to encourage friends and collaborators to work towards acceptance and appreciation of the unique aspects and talents of all people. Individuals and communities can get involved by participating in activities sponsored by their local ASA chapter or by promoting services related to autism.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Item 1.04, Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Role Resolution. I call on Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 2016 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Role. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future. And whereas employees have dedicated their time, energy, and resources in support of increasing student achievement and college awareness, students with disabilities through meaningful work experiences, and multiple school athletic training programs, now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names Deloitte, Serco Inc., and Ortho Virginia to the 2016 Virginia School Board Association Business Honor Role, showing appreciation for their ongoing support of Fairfax County Public Schools. Is there a...
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Okay. We will recognize them again at a future meeting. Thank you. Item 1.05, we do have some very special guests with us tonight. It's National Board Certified Teacher Recognition. On behalf of the school board, I would like to welcome members of the leadership team, the National Board Certified Teachers, and guests. We're pleased to recognize the Fairfax County teachers who have earned or renewed National Board Certification during the 2015-2016 school year. It's truly an honor, especially for me as a teacher who never even tried to achieve this, I really, I'm so impressed, to pay tribute to each of you for your dedication and your contributions to the education of our students as they master the skills necessary to be successful 21st century thinkers and responsible citizens. The success of this school system is based on teachers being committed to nurturing students by working in partnership with families and collaborating with colleagues. These National Board Certified teachers are members of an elite group and deserve our sincere thanks and congratulations. It's my sincere pleasure to introduce Superintendent Dr. Garza.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is giving me a great pleasure to recognize these wonderful teachers tonight. As we've said so many times, our teachers are our backbone of our school system and really the heart of what makes FCPS so great. And these are wonderful examples of outstanding teachers, almost 15,000 strong that we have throughout FCPS, but these are an elite group. How many of you tonight are earning your credential for the first time? Very good. And the rest of you are renewing this year. So as we all know, this is a nationally recognized program that really lifts up teachers and teaching learning and really demonstrates that our teachers are professionals. But we know it's also a very rigorous, very time-consuming process, and so we thank you for embracing that challenge. And I think we have one of the largest contingents of National Board Certified Teachers in the country. Is that correct? And I think that is a real source, should be a source of pride for us as a school system. So we are very proud tonight to congratulate each of you tonight for being a part of this. You are leaders that strive every day not only to impact student learning, but also to support your colleagues and to improve teaching and learning for all children. And I think that's important. We know that not only do you strive to make a difference in the lives of children every day, but you also strive to make a difference in the classroom by using reflective practice to drive instruction. National Board Certified teachers develop and demonstrate advanced teaching knowledge, skills, and best practices in order to be recognized by their peers as accomplished educational professionals. Since the program began in FCPS, I'm proud to share that there are 463 teachers in our school system who've become certified through this program. And I think that is something to be, I think that's wonderful. We need to give that a round of applause. And we still today have about 264 still teaching in our classrooms throughout our system. So I want to thank you all for your continued contributions on a daily basis to our students and to our school system. And before I ask Kathleen Waltz to come up to the podium, I also want to acknowledge our wonderful FCPS team that support this work. So thank you, Kathleen, and your entire team. So would you stand up if you're one of our support folks for this program? Thank you for what you do. And then we'll commence with our recognition, and I'll ask Kathleen Waltz to come up and continue the program. So thank you again very much.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. This is really a special evening, one that I look forward to every year as we congratulate our newly certified and our renewed National Board Certified teachers. I think it's important to share a little bit about the process because it is quite a rigorous process. And I see some head nods because our teachers here know just the standards that they're up against as they challenge themselves. The teachers we are recognizing tonight have earned their certification by completing a voluntary assessment program, so they choose to do this on their own. It's designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who have met high standards based on what highly effective teachers know and are able to do on a daily basis. In order to earn this certification, teachers must analyze their teaching practices and abilities to meet the needs of all students. They submit videos of their teaching and provide student work samples that demonstrate academic growth. The reflective analyses must validate a number of things: a strong command of content, the ability to design appropriate learning experiences that advance student learning, the use of assessments to inform instructional decision-making, and partnerships with colleagues, parents, and the community. So I'm sure you would like to hear firsthand from one of our new National Board Certified teachers. Jenny Goransson has always been a writer and is an AP Literature and 9th Grade English teacher and the founder of the Writing Center and Poetry Club at West Springfield High School. She enjoys helping students discover how to think, persuade, and feel through writing. She loves her job because there is always something more to learn from the students, from her colleagues, and from literature. She believes in enthusiastically exposing students to various genres from graphic novels to slam poetry to Shakespeare, in the hopes that they too will find that literature speaks to them about the questions and issues they grapple with personally. I'd like to introduce Jenny, and she's going to share a few remarks with us.
Good evening. I'm excited to share with the school board my proudest achievement as a teacher and tell you all about an important movement in education. In 2010, I started the Writing Center at West Springfield High School as a place where peer tutors are available to work with writers. These student tutors take an elective I teach called Advanced Composition, where they receive an in-depth training on how to work collaboratively with other writers. They're trained to help with writing from any discipline and at any stage of the writing process, from brainstorming to revising. The tutors gain important life skills such as active listening, improvising in social situations, and being friendly yet professional with someone they do not know. In the age of budget cuts and increasing class sizes, the peer tutors offer the invaluable gift of one-on-one help that teachers may not be able to give to every student as much as they would like. And as many of you know, students often listen to other students more than they listen to us teachers. Each year, the Writing Center becomes more ingrained in our school culture and has facilitated conversations across departments about writing instruction. The Writing Center tutors also plan and run popular workshops on student-related, student-requested topics such as the College Application Essay, the Writing Section of the SAT, and note-taking skills. We've also started offering conversation sessions in which ESAL students come in to practice their English with a native English speaker. Overall, the Writing Center is a space where connections are made between students who might not otherwise have crossed paths and students experience learning and teaching in new ways. Although most universities have a Writing Center on campus, it is more rare on the high school level. So I've worked to share the power of this model with others. At professional conferences and FCPS in-service, I share strategies and resources with others who are trying to make a Writing Center work in their high school or middle school. Working with the Writing Center directors at Edison, Oakden, Centreville, Robinson, and Hayfield, I've helped organize four conferences at George Mason University focused on high school Writing Centers. High school students and teachers from all over the DC metro region and some from further away travel to these conferences to either present or to just take part in the conversations. The conference is another example of how high school students are capable of more than we think. Just like graduate students or professionals, they submit proposals, prepare professional presentations, field questions from their audience, and come back from the conference ready to share what they learned with their fellow tutors. The conference attendees range from schools who have had Writing Centers for seven years to those who are just thinking of starting one sometime down the road. Many school administrators and principals also attend the conference in order to learn how administration can best support Writing Center work. After putting on the conferences for a few years, my colleagues and I decided to start a nonprofit organization called CAPTA, Capital Area Peer Tutoring Association, to increase the communication between high school Writing Centers. CAPTA now has 19 member schools, and aside from planning the annual conference, it offers Writing Center Director retreats, runs an official blog where tutors can submit their writing for publication, and shares useful resources on its website. As a whole, Writing Centers are student-centered and student-led, and because of this, they can reach students in a way that traditional classroom teaching alone cannot. I feel lucky to be a part of such an empowering movement in education.
Jenny, thank you for sharing your leadership and your teaching with all of us. It makes me want to be in your classroom. I would be so excited. So this is an example of some of the work that our National Board Certified teachers do on a daily basis, and we're very proud of you. So you may wonder why we have only two new nationally Board Certified teachers this year. The National Board Certification process has changed from a two-year process to a three-year process. And so with that, we are in year two of the three-year rollout. So after today's recognition, we will not have any newly certified National Board teachers until spring of 2018. However, we will have many candidates who go through the renewal process. We'll be glad to recognize them at next year's meeting. It is, again, as I have said, a very, very rigorous process, and we're proud of all of you, those of you who are new and those of you who have renewed. So now, Dr. Garza, if you would join me in presenting the certificates to the honorees. Honorees, when your name is called, please come forward to accept your certificate and then walk toward the raised steps and wait for the group picture. After the names of our new National Board Certified teachers have been called, we invite our school board members, our leadership team members, region assistant superintendents and principals to join them for this photo opportunity. Congratulations to Michelle Devote of Lake Braddock Secondary School who earned the Adolescence and Young Adult Social Studies History Certificate, Principal Dave Thomas. Congratulations to Jennifer Goransson, from whom you heard tonight, of West Springfield High School, who earned the Adolescence and Young Adult English Language Arts Certificate, Principal Michael Mukai. At this time, we invite our school board, our region assistant superintendents, our principals, to come forward for a photo with our newly certified National Board teachers. The following National Board Certified teachers have renewed their certificates. Honorees, when your name is called, please come forward and join the school board on the raised steps. Our National Board Certified Teacher Program Manager, Mary Lou Carmack. Mary Lou is with Colvin Run Elementary School, and she renewed the Early Adolescence Science Certificate, Principal Kenneth Young. Julie Coffey of Robinson Secondary School renewed Early Adolescence English Language Arts Certificate, Principal Matthew E. Line. Kathleen Gannon of Woodburn Elementary School renewed Early Childhood Through Young Adult School Counseling Certificate, Principal Bridget Chapin. Leslie Gavert of Providence Elementary School renewed the Early Childhood Through Young Adult Exceptional Needs Specialist Certificate, Principal Jessie Kraft. Lisa Home of Riverside Elementary School renewed the Early Childhood Generalist Certificate, Principal Paul Bezdekis. Nikki Holmes of Annandale High School in Absentia renewed the Adolescence and Young Adult English Language Arts Certificate, Principal Tim Thomas. Gretchen Leekdy Lynch of Freedom Hill Elementary School renewed the Early and Middle Childhood Music Certificate, Principal Scott Bloom. Nora One of Poe Middle School in Absentia renewed the Early Adolescence English Language Arts Certificate, Principal Maria Eck. Jillian Pilcher of Special Services Office of Special Education Instruction renewed the Early Childhood Through Young Adult Exceptional Needs Specialist Certificate, Director Irene Meyer. Christopher Rosler of Bucknell Elementary School renewed the Middle Childhood Generalist Certificate, Principal Tim Slater. Catherine Ruffing of Centreville High School renewed the Adolescence and Young Adult Social Studies History Certificate, Principal David Jagels. Tina Simons of Saratoga Elementary School renewed the Early Childhood Generalist Certificate, Principal Amy Miller. Judy Smith of Cameron Elementary School renewed the Early Childhood Generalist Certificate, Principal Jeanne Waters. Julianne Trimble of Centreville Elementary School in Absentia renewed the Early Childhood Generalist Certificate, Principal Duane Young. Amy Valith of Chesterbrook Elementary School renewed the Middle Childhood Generalist Certificate, Principal Robert Fuqua. At this time, we invite principals, region leaders, to come forward for a group photo with the renewed National Board Certified teachers. So we wanted to let our teachers know that if you wanted to take photos with your families, the photographer will meet you out in the hallway. Let's give another round of applause to our National Board Certified teachers.
Thank you, everybody, so much. Thank you, Dr. Garza, leadership team, participants, and guests. It is our honor to have you here tonight with us. that make schools a better place for our students. Thank you to Mr. Franklin over there for leading so well. Forestville is actually the school I started in an FCPS in 20 years ago. It's an awesome school. Anyone who cares about our schools, by the way, should be speaking to their supervisors on April 5th through 7th. They're emailing them now and letting them know to please put the meals tax on the ballot in the upcoming election. My understanding is that they're going to vote on this later in April, and we need a consistent revenue stream to fund our schools, and that may actually even provide some relief to homeowners down the road. Finally, I need to address something, something very important, and I need to do it now. However, I promised you I would not, so I can't. It's confidential and stuff, so I won't talk about anything tonight. Instead, I'll talk about nothing. I'm going to give a speech about nothing. You guys ever watch Seinfeld? I think it's really important for your teachers to understand what didn't happen recently, Dr. Garza, because this Division Superintendent, School Board, and Head of Human Resources really care about their teachers and their principals. They did something super-duper wonderful this week. They did nothing. Thank you all. It's critical that I take the time publicly to thank you and to let your teachers be aware of why nothing happened, so they can also recognize how much the people in leadership in this school system value them as employees and why this really is a great place to work, Dr. Garza. Nothing happened because our school board chair stood for her teachers, as she will always be our colleague, and she advocated for nothing. She was a shield for them, and I'm so proud of her. Thank you so much, Chairman Hines. Thanks for nothing. Nothing happened because several other school board members rallied around our teachers protecting the world from undue stress, providing a caring culture for our premier workforce. I'd like to give a couple of thank yous to Ms. Evans, thanks for nothing. Ms. Darnett Kofax, thanks for nothing. Ms. McLaughlin, thanks for nothing. Ms. Corbett Sanders, thanks for nothing. Mostly, nothing happened because we have the best superintendent in the country, one who also was and is, she recently assisted me, a teacher and remains their champion. Dr. Garza, thank you for your wisdom and trust and genuine care for your employees. Thanks for nothing. And finally, I want to recognize Dr. Ramey, our HR Superintendent. His courage and collaboration this past week to get nothing accomplished, so things could be better, is respected beyond words. Thanks for nothing, Dr. Ramey. I'm glad we could address nothing tonight without breaking my promise to discuss anything, as that is all very confidential. Now that we all know and accept nothing, we can all work together to get something great done. Please know you will have our continued support on everything. You all rock. You have a great evening.
You're welcome, Mr. Greenberg. Next, Seho Moon?
I'm not a student of this school board or any school system, but I use the Luther Jackson Middle School soccer field. And I got a ticket from the Mosaic District private shopping mall, security at night. I was watching Sunday League Soccer. The gate was open, and the sign says, "Spectators are welcome to watch." And as you can see on the picture, the color picture, it says, on the top of the soccer field, it has a triangle-shaped parking lot. Then I parked there, and then the game was done, I was ready to go, but the security came over and asked me, "How am I doing?" And I told them, "I'm doing fine. Why do you care?" And they told me, "Don't show me your attitude." So I, "Okay, who do you think you are? I'm using the field." And they called police, and they gave me a warning that if I come back ever again to the field parking lot, I'll be trespassing, I'll go to jail. So I went to a land record office at the Fairfax Elementary School Court, and then the black and gray picture is the land recording of the Mosaic District, which is Askridge Incorporated. But the person I talked to at the Gayhouse Road School Board building is at the third floor. Her name is Nice Warner. She works for Construction and Design. She told me, gave me a chance to talk to facility manager, and he told me, basically, the adjacent, the parking lot adjacent to the field is for the school use, but at night the school gate is closed, and then their cars are supposed to be, the security say, their own property, you know? So what happened is that I also talked to the truck driver that maintains the field, opens and closes the gate at night. I explained to him, and he also agreed that the parking lot adjacent to the field belongs to the school. But when I actually emailed one of you that I recognized through the picture on the school board, I got no reply. And I called them, I left a voicemail, nobody replied, and I emailed them, nobody replied, including the chair supervisor. And then I went to the school board building. They didn't know who owns who, what boundaries they own property, and I want you to clarify which part of the parking lot the citizens can use, because I don't want to have to park across from the McDonald's and such side road parking. And I'm banned from using the field because they are banning, basically, they say they own all the property next to the field, so I want you to clarify before I can, I go to jail for trespassing.
Mr. Moon, would you do something for me? Would you talk to the clerk right there? If you, um...
Actually, actually, Mr. Plattenberg right there would like to get your name and information, Mr. Moon.
Thanks.
We'll be happy to help you. Right up there, that gentleman right there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I am still glad to see another Moon in the building.
Okay, item 2.02, Student Representative Matters. I call on Mr. Press.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's wonderful to be back once again. It's been a slow transition back into the pace of school life for some after a refreshing spring break, but I think people are beginning to get back into the swing of things. As many of you know, this is one of the most challenging times of year for our high school students. College decisions are rolling in, and many of our students are gearing up for their futures in higher education. They are nervously awaiting answers to the question, "Where will I be in September of next year?" And for many, that answer cannot come soon enough. Many of our students see admission to college, not graduation, as the goal they are working towards and have been for the past four years, if not longer. And while this point of view is not unique to Fairfax, it is truly pervasive. It detracts from the joy of learning in the sense that students do not take the classes that they want to take. They take the classes that they feel they need to take. Taking five or six AP or IB classes is right for some students. They feel the need to be challenged, and we should support them in that. But we, as a school system and as a community, should not challenge them to do more than they are comfortable with. We should change the conversation from, "How many AP or honors classes can I take?", to, "What class interests me the most, and where will I be happiest?" To that end, I was fortunate enough to visit the Marshall High School Academy a few weeks ago and spoke with some of the students there. I chatted with them about their enrollment in academy classes, which, by the way, are some of the most innovative and advanced in the country. They told me that these were the most interesting classes that they had ever taken, and that they felt happier than they had before. They left the pressure behind and took the courses they wanted to, and for them, that made all the difference. But we find that they are in the minority. With students reporting workloads and stress levels higher than ever, we have a golden opportunity to change the conversation. We can change our approach from the school board down to make a difference in the lives of our students. I want to ask tonight that the board continue and enhance its dialogue with our partners in higher education, both in and out of state, public and private, to see how we can balance competitiveness in the college admissions process with their needs as students. This board has the opportunity to lead nationally on this issue, and we can do that with a first step as simple as a college admissions roundtable. Moving on, I want to give a shout-out to Real Food for Kids, one of our amazing local advocacy organizations, for highlighting the excellence that we cultivate in our students. They put on an incredible food expo at Robinson Secondary School to show off the talents of some of our young chefs and culinary minds in the county. And I know I speak for everyone who attended when I say we were amazed by their professionalism and the quality of the products that they put out. The ideas that they proposed for new lunch offerings in our cafeterias as replacements for or variations on current offerings were amazing, and I think that we should continue to involve these talented young people in our ongoing discussions about the future of food service in FCPS. Their perspective and talent is very valuable. I'd also like to take a quick moment to congratulate all of the awardees from our Regional Science Fair on March 13th. Although I was never much of a scientist myself, I was amazed by the brilliance and creativity of some of these young minds. Their research and everything from biochemistry to electricity to mathematics went completely over my head, but was very impressive nonetheless. Congratulations to all who participated. And finally, looking forward, I will be attending Thomas Jefferson's International Night this weekend, should be very exciting. Dr. Garza's Business Luncheon at Annandale on Wednesday, and the Region Five Listening Tour on April 13th at Chantilly. Although I might only have three months left, I'm not done yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Item 3.01, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting earlier. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. Item M1, do I have the motion from Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in the closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1-254B1.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, Wilson, and Palchik. All those opposed. Ms. Schultz, and those abstaining. Ms. McLaughlin. The motion carries. I have, I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used an illegal drug at school, who also possessed a controlled substance prescribed to another at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decisions of the Division Superintendent.
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hand. Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, Wilson, Schultz, and Palchik. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Huff and Wilson. The motion carries. M3, I call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used an illegal drug at school, and who also possessed a controlled substance prescribed to another at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hand. Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon. Those opposed? McLaughlin, Schultz, and Palchik. Those abstaining? Huff and Wilson. The motion carries. M3, I call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with serious criminal offenses related to an alleged community-based incident, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Palchik. All those in favor, raise your hand. Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, no, no, I'm sorry. Strauss, Evans, Hines, Moon, McLaughlin, Schultz, and Palchik. Those opposed? And those abstaining? Abstaining, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Corbett Sanders. The motion carries. Thank you. Item 3.02, the FY 2016 Revised Audit Plan. I call on Mrs. Strauss for the motion.
Thank you. I move that the school board approve the revised FY 2016 Annual Audit Plan, including the authorization to issue a request for proposal to support the newly added audit engagement for an internal audit of the FCPS cybersecurity as detailed in the agenda item.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, very briefly. This was presented as new business at our previous board meeting. We discussed it at a work session on May 17th. The other adjustment in the audit plan, just for people's review, is there was a decision to remove from the 2016 Audit Plan homebound and home-based instruction that may or may not be considered for the next year, depending on the committee and the school board. So those are the adjustments. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Nothing to add.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and vote on the motion. Those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item 4, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 4.01, Approve the Minutes of the December 17, 2016 Regular School Board Meeting. 4.02, Appoint Individuals to Serve on Committees as Detailed in the Agenda Item. 4.03, Adopt Policy 1203 Division Superintendent's Role and Policy 1204 Organization Chart for the School Division as Detailed in the Agenda Item. 4.04, Award a Contract for the Twain Middle School Roof Replacement Project to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible Bitter, RD Bean, Inc., in the Amount of $263,385, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.05, Award a Contract for the Cherry Run Elementary School Renovation Project to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible Bitter, Keller Brothers, Inc., in the Amount of $694,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.05, Award a Contract for the Cherry Run Elementary School Renovation Project to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible Bitter, Keller Brothers, Inc., in the Amount of $694,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.06, Award a Contract for the Forestville Elementary School Renovation Project to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible Bitter, Hess Construction and Engineering Services, Inc., in the Amount of $13,990,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities...
sexual conduct at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Seconded by Ms. Palczuk. All those in favor, raise your hand. Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, no, no, I'm sorry. Strauss, Evans, Hines, Moon, McLaughlin, Schultz, and Palczuk. Those opposed? And those abstaining? Abstaining, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Corbett Sanders. The motion carries. Thank you. Item 3.02, the FY 2016 Revised Audit Plan. I call on Mrs. Strauss for the motion.
Thank you. I move that the school board approve the revised FY 2016 Annual Audit Plan, including the authorization to issue a request for proposal to support the newly added audit engagement for an internal audit of the FCPS cybersecurity as detailed in the agenda item.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, very briefly, this was presented as new business at our previous board meeting. We discussed it at a work session on May 17th. The other adjustment in the audit plan, just for people's review, is there was a decision to remove from the 2016 Audit Plan homebound and home-based instruction that may or may not be considered for the next year depending on the committee and the school board. So those are the adjustments. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Nothing to add.
Any further discussion? Alright, seeing none, we will go ahead and vote on the motion. Those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item 4, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 4.01, approve the minutes of the December 17, 2016 Regular School Board Meeting. 4.02, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 4.03, adopt Policy 1203 Division Superintendent's Role and Policy 1204 Organization Chart for the School Division as detailed in the agenda item. 4.04, award a contract for the Twain Middle School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RD Bean, Inc., in the amount of $263,385, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.05, award a contract for the Cherry Run Elementary School Renovation Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Keller Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $694,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.06, award a contract for the Forestville Elementary School Renovation Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Hess Construction and Engineering Services, Inc., in the amount of $13,990,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.07, confirm the separations for the period beginning February 1, 2016, and ending February 29, 2016, as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item 5, New Business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 5.01, adopt Policy 1801 Conflict of Interest and Statement of Economic Interest, School Board Members and Superintendent of Schools, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.02, award a contract for Annandale High School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.03, award a contract for the Newington Forest Elementary School Renovation Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.04, award a contract for the Forestville Elementary School Public Improvements to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.05, authorize the assistant superintendent, in consultation with staff and legal counsel, to take all actions necessary and appropriate to finalize and grant a trail easement to the Board of Supervisors across the portion of Rachel Carson property substantially in the form and location reflected in the attached deed of easement and easement plat. 5.06, adopt Spanish, French, and German textbooks for levels 1 through 3 as recommended by the World Language Basal Instructional Materials Adoption Committee and the Selection Advisory Committee, and approve upper-level materials, levels 4, 5, AP, and IB, as recommended resources for these levels. 5.07, approve the Career and Technical Education Management System 2016-2017 Application for Career and Technical Education Funds. Item 6, Superintendent Matters. Next on the agenda is Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, again, I want to congratulate our school board for being one of 15 first-place winners in the National School Board Association's 2016 Magno Awards Competition. FCPS was one of the five first-place winners among school districts of over 20,000 students. It was a larger, large school category. The Magno Awards recognize schools, systems, school districts, and their school board leaders that take bold and innovative steps to improve the lives of their students and their communities. The board won this Magno Award for the community engagement around the FY 17 budget. An independent panel of school board members, national school board members, administrators, and educators selected the winners from nearly 200 submissions. So next week, our school board members will receive the award. I'd like to, again, congratulate our board, but I'd also like to acknowledge Susan Quinn, Kristin Michael, and everyone in our financial services staff. They do yeoman's work, and they're very lean and mean, but they do yeoman's work in support of the very important budget process, financial process that we go through. Also want to congratulate Matt Guilfoyle, our Executive Director of Communications and Community Outreach, for all their work on engaging our community. It takes a lot of work beyond the normal workday to do some of that, so we very much appreciate it. A2, as Mr. Press put so well, a2, want to congratulate our students who were involved, who participated in our county science fair, had opportunity to visit with so many of the students. I was so impressed. Yes, much of it was over my head, but go to the science fair, and you know that we have students right here in FCPS that will most definitely solve some of the most pressing issues that face our nation, because they're just brilliant. So I was very amazed and certainly impressed with them. Also want to congratulate Bill Curran, the Northern Virginia Football Hall of Fame recognized him, our Director of Athletics and Student Activities. They honored him with the Tom Davis Meritorious Service Awards. Many of you actually, I think, attended that event. It was in a very large room, but I know that some of you were there because they announced you. I didn't, it was kind of dark, and I didn't see all of you, but I know you were there. This award recognizes individuals who have given their time and energy to support youth football in our community, so we certainly congratulate Bill, who's done such a great, great job in supporting our students and our student athletics programming. School Board Chair Pat Hines will be speaking on behalf of our school board and our school system next Tuesday at the Board of Supervisors' Public Hearings on the Fiscal Year 17 Budget. That begins on Tuesday, April 5th at 4:00. So we support her and hope that our community will be there in support of her and the continued conversation around how do we take care of our county and our public, our great public schools that we have here, right here in our county. The public hearings will continue also on Wednesday and Thursday, starting at 1:00. We want to thank our public for engaging and being interested in this important process over the coming weeks and months. Very important decisions will be made about our public schools, and so we ask for their continued support. So that concludes my comments, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item 7, Board Committee Reports. Next on the agenda is Board Reports, and I call on Ms. Strauss for a report on budget and audit committees.
Thank you very much. On May 14th at the work session, we had at the budget portion, there was an update on the state revenue, and at that time, the state had finished their work, and we will be recognizing an additional $16.8 million from the state. And so as of March 14th, the gap between our ask of the Board of Supervisors and what we believe we would need to close our gap was $51.1 million. There, following this meeting, there will be another budget work session and another update. We've had several audit committee meetings. The result of the March 17th, of an earlier audit committee meeting, we passed a revision to the audit plans. I think that is self-explanatory. We had an audit committee meeting last evening. There will be three policies coming to the board in April. One dealing with the Auditor General Authority, one dealing with waste, fraud, and abuse, and another one dealing with anti-retaliation. We will also now begin the development of the 2017 Audit Work Plan, and Ms. Trump will be heavily involved in that, working with school board member, management, et cetera. And we are hoping that we will be able to complete this important discussion. We hope by the end of June. If it slips a little, we understand, but it is important work. This will be the first time that this seated board will have an opportunity to discuss and decide on what we hope will be a robust set of engagements. And I need to also clarify, they are audits. We could, we can also assign research projects, by the way, white papers, whatever it is that we would like. So at any rate, that, look forward to some good hard discussions and thinking is a part of that process. And I believe that brings us up to date. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A call on Mr. Moon for an update on governance.
As you can all remember, on March 14th, the whole board continued the discussion on potential redesign of advisory committees. I just want to take this opportunity to remind my board members, board liaisons, to get back to, if you have not, to your respective advisory committees to get the further feedback. You'll probably need few more meetings to come to a conclusion on these important issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I call on Mr. McElvein for updates on public engagement and state legislation.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Hines. For the PEC Committee update, we discussed as a board the survey that was going to be released by our school system on the pre-Labor Day start for the school year. That survey, as you all know, has been released this week. We will be discussing that throughout this month. It comes up for new business at our next meeting, and we will vote on it by the end of April. So please stay tuned and be sure to fill out that survey that you received in your email box. And as for the legislative update, we had our state lobbyist, Michael Malloy, give us a presentation on all the exciting things and detrimental things that happened to us in the General Assembly Session, and all of that information can be found on our website under the Superintendent's page and Government Relations. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Evans, for an update on our forum from tonight?
Yes, tonight, we discussed two items. One was the issue of reporting by our Auditor General, and we have asked our Auditor General to make a proposed plan, and to, that will be referred to the Audit Committee for consideration, and the Audit Committee will bring a recommendation to the full board. We also agreed to review our guidelines on newsletters and the use of social media, which will be referred to the Public Engagement Committee, and Public Engagement will bring recommendations to the board on any needed revisions.
Thank you. Item 8, Board Matters. I call on Ms. Darnett Kofax to start us off.
Thank you, Chairman Hines. I hope everyone is feeling refreshed and renewed from their spring break activities, because we have lots of work coming up, so I hope everyone enjoyed their time away. This week, as I got back into the swing myself, I was able to take a tour of some of the new facilities at TJ. I hadn't been there in a little while, and I encourage my colleagues, if you haven't been there in a while, please go and see the amazing things that are happening. When we talk about student leaders, I had a tour by a student leader who was doing research on cancer cells. So it was quite impressive, and, you know, while she was doing that, she was still very much a high school young lady, and just, you know, it was just an amazing opportunity to interact with some of the students and see what they're doing there, as is happening in so many of our high schools. Last night, there was a small but engaged crowd at the Lee District Association of Civic Organizations where Jeff McKay and I fielded budget questions, and I want to thank Kristin Michaels for your always excellent support in helping me field some of those questions. And in April, we have many spring drama and musical productions coming up, so in my district, what I'm doing is I'm promoting to try to get those back in the school that have not been in our schools for a while. We are promoting free tickets to our senior citizens for opening nights for plays or musicals in Lee District, and I will have details in my newsletter, which will be out either Friday or Monday, when I get it done. So, but there'll be details with productions starting the first week of April. So I encourage all of our seniors who live in Lee to come back into our schools and see the amazing things that we're doing in our arts.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McElvein?
Okay, I hope everyone had a wonderful spring break. As a matter of future consideration, I do believe that we need to remove reports by committees that have been filmed, and I thought we decided on that at the previous retreat, but I will bring it up at the next retreat so we can save some time at our board meetings. Thank you.
Ms. Huff?
Thank you. I want to thank South Lakes for hosting the Mini Maker Fair, which was at the same day as the Science Fair, so I had an opportunity to enjoy that, and there were some amazing and fun displays, and interactive as well. It was excellent. And I want to congratulate all of the teams that competed in the Odyssey of the Mind competition, and good luck to all the teams heading to states in a couple of weeks. And just to remind our constituents to please fill out the pre-Labor Day survey, because we really want your input as we go ahead to make this decision. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the Thomas Jefferson Mentorship Fair, which is a, truly a capstone project for the seniors heavily, heavily involved in their science projects. These are young men and women who have spent months working in professional laboratories throughout the metropolitan area, and they are often doing significant research projects, and I would say probably at the college graduate level. And it is always wonderfully inspiring to see the projects. The students articulate in their ability to describe very complicated scientific adventures. So not only is it an opportunity to see amazing experiments and creative ideas of how to solve problems, but to listen to how they can describe it so that it actually can be useful to mankind. I was very, very proud of these students and Thomas Jefferson for supporting this. It's not only a tremendous amount of work for the students, but it is also for the professional laboratories throughout who accept these students, and also for many of our lab teachers at Thomas Jefferson who support the project. So congratulations to Thomas Jefferson. Be proud. These are wonderful, wonderful students. Thanks.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'd like to first give a shout out to Martha Gallagher, the Mount Vernon student on the student leadership as part of the student leadership cohort this year, because she did an excellent job in organizing Mount Vernon's Student Leadership Town Hall on the 16th of March. So job well done, Martha. I also want to give a heads up to people in the community and encourage them to participate in the Earth Day celebrations at many of our elementary schools, middle, and high schools. One in particular, Holland Meadows, is having one on April 16th, so I would encourage you to do that. And I look forward to attending the Reflections Awards Ceremony tomorrow night, where we can see the excellent arts in action by students throughout the county and being hosted by the Fairfax County Council of PTAs.
Okay, Ms. Evans?
Thank you. Yes, I also wanted to, like Mr. Press, congratulate Real Food for Kids for a wonderful culinary challenge. It was great to be able to taste some of the delicious recipes, not only by high school students, but by a number of middle school students as well. I wanted to add my congratulations to Bill Curran. It was a great event for both Mr. Curran and for the other people recognized at the Northern Virginia Football Hall of Fame banquet. It was a great annual event there, and I was happy to see Mr. Curran recognized for his great work. Regional Science Fair, as others have mentioned, was really an exciting event, and I just can't say enough about the projects and the students there and the amazing amount of work that was on display there. So congratulations to those students as well.
Mr. Moon?
I don't want to repeat what all the board members have said about all the events, but I want to mention that there was a 6th grade Ethics Day, which Mrs. Strauss and I were happy to be there and observe what the 6th graders were discussing related to ethical issues.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
Let's see how I can capture this as quickly as possible. First of all, I do want to share with my colleagues that I was really excited that at Woodson High School, led by the Director of Student Services, Carlin Floyd, who used to be principal at Quanda Road, she held a Latino and Korean Parent Night event, and Ms. Palczuk was there with me, as we both have large population of students at Woodson. And the parent liaisons, and Dr. Floyd, and several others who were there, it was really remarkable. She had two rooms set up, so there could be an interpreter, both for the Korean attendees and the Spanish-speaking attendees, and just really another example of FCPS trying to strengthen its community ties and really help with our ability to narrow achievement gaps. And so it was really, it was a great night, and it was something that I look forward to seeing in many more of our schools. I also want to thank Ms. Schultz, who allowed me to join her at Fairfax High School, where she met with a student leadership class, and I'll let her speak more to it. But Dr. Garza, once again, I think you'll be really pleased to know that we just have dynamic students who are so willing to share the things that they enjoy about their education and the things that they hope we'll take into consideration as we continue our efforts to improve their experiences in the classroom. So it was really great. Elizabeth and I share an executive assistant, so she's going to compile the survey results from what the kids fill out on the survey of us asking them about their educational experience, but we'll then be able to share that with all of you and Dr. Garza and her team. I also had the chance to attend with Mr. Moon the Lake Braddock Band Concert, which, wow, it was just tremendous, the talent and the enthusiasm and the music directors, just once again, such an example of the dedicated faculty we have in our buildings that inspire our kids and the parents who support them. Really loved being a part of that night. And then for Real Food for Kids event that was at Robinson, mentioned by Ms. Evans, I just wanted to express my appreciation to Rodney Taylor. He was part of a panel that spoke earlier in the morning just about the efforts we're trying to bring. trying to bring farm-to-table quality foods to our students, and they invited the local farmers to come and be part of that dialogue, and it was just exciting to see Fairfax County yet again, working so hard to look for ways to improve the services we bring to our students. I also wanted to let my colleagues know that a couple of things related to budget, both Ms. Schultz and I met jointly with our two supervisors, Harady and Cook, to talk about where we are on the budget and to really lay out our belief that regardless of what the supervisors do determine in terms of the additional revenue, there, there really must be parity in terms of funding. So, the county executive's budget doesn't reflect that this time, but I was encouraged by their recognition that there needs to be that parity there, and also in speaking with Supervisor McKay, I also was encouraged by that recognition that in the current proposed budget by the county executive, we're not, where we as a tradition have always funded our schools as being as valuable as county services. So, I think those are important messages, and I just wanted you all to know that I was feeling like at least that important component of our conversation is, is at least being heard and understood. And then, Ms. Kofax, like you, we did have a budget town hall that I participated with Supervisor Cook because it was a third budget hall, a budget town hall in Braddock District. It was smaller attendance than we'd seen at some of the other ones, but still robust dialogue between those who don't have children in schools and worried about the impact on their tax bill, and then our families who were there to talk about why we need to maintain strong schools for the betterment of everyone in our community. And I really want to say I appreciated seeing not only our colleague, Jeanette Huff, there with me at the Braddock Town Hall, but also Delegate Eileen Fillercorn, and also our former colleague, Ted Velkoff. I, I just, it's nice to have the support of, of others outside of the board at these events and, and trying to talk about why this budget matters so much.
Ms. Schultz?
So, I want to add to my congratulations that Dr. Garza mentioned earlier regarding our employees and our Northern Virginia football recognition. The amazing thing about that and the importance of the recognition was for the work that we're doing on heads-up football. And having been at the original meeting with the NFL Commissioner out at Centerville High School, and being a parent in the SYA Youth Football Community, which is where it was one of the pilot programs in the nation, and to see it adapted in FCPS, and most importantly, the statistics around the reduction in the number of concussions. I know that that's on the minds of a lot of parents these days, particularly in, in high-impact sports, and to see the recognition come to FCPS was really very, very important and the work that is being done. I do want to thank the principals at both Fairfax and Chantilly, as Ms. McLaughlin alluded to earlier, for the student town halls. I think I've calculated that I've now, in the last two and a half years, spoken to over 1,000 students in these student town halls, truly becoming an impressive set of information for me to help inform me as a board member on policies that we make at kids, but not often enough with them. And it really lends a student voice to much of the work that I do as a board member. Particularly, I want to thank Chantilly. It was a little bit weird going back, having attended Chantilly myself and seeing that they painted the, the, the brick siding, or I'm sure it's something that they do as regular, they didn't do it just for me, but there's signage outside and they painted it with my name welcoming me to the school. But to listen to the instructors and the administrators in the building say that they, that was the first one that I had done at Chantilly, how impressed they were listening to the students, interact with the board member, and really share how the education is happening to them and how they feel. And so, I hope to share some important information when we have a composite of the data. I will be hosting, I still have Centerville, and I think South County, I can't remember them all. I want to thank Cross Point, which is a very large community in my, in the Springfield District, for inviting Senator George Barker, Delegate Dave Albo, and myself to come to your annual homeowners' meeting and share some significant policy and information about what's going on in the schools and in our district. Thanks again. I feel like I'm always in a position of thanking Mr. Plattenberg and Mr. Sneed. We've been dealing with a lot of community concern around one of our school renovations, and the principal, I know that that's a stressful time for the principal and for the employees in the building, as well as for the families and the students. And I just wish that everybody gives us the time and the ability to respond and continue to be responsive, and facilities is certainly helping us do that. This week, I had a citizen town hall to engage with members of the community at Union Mill Elementary, and I have another one coming up next Monday at Sangster Elementary at seven o'clock. I welcome anybody who wasn't able to join us for the one at Union Mill. That is my last citizen town hall that's currently scheduled for this spring period, so it may be a while because we get busy with the budget. So, please do make the opportunity to come and join us there. And lastly, I want to thank Supervisors Cook, McKay, Harady, and Chairman Boliva. I didn't get much of an Easter break because I spent a meeting with, with about half of the, the Board of Supervisors, trying to, you know, continue to create a bridge between our board and their board and look to a successful end to our, our budget woes. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Palchek?
I will keep it brief. I wanted to, first of all, congratulate again the National Board Certified Teachers. Going back to something Mr. Press said earlier, I remember my senior year, I chose not to take an IP course because I wanted to have two fabulous teachers who, that year, were going through their board certification, and they walked us through it. We got to live it with them, and we were all so proud of the work they were doing and that we, as students, were able to help them do some of the research and go through that, through that program. So, it's fabulous. I'm so proud that we have almost 500 board-certified Fairfax County employees, and hope we continue to support that program. I also wanted to congratulate Marshall Academy for winning the Real Food for Kids competition. It was fun. I had visited the academy earlier that week and visited the chef, who was so fabulous, that he has some students there who are just so inspired by, by being in the academy, even one student who was visually impaired, and he was able to work with him and find a way for him to be in the culinary program. So, having grown up in a, in a very culinary family, it was just, I was very impressed to see that. The other thing, I also have been in meeting with many of our supervisors and want to thank them for taking the time to meet with me. Ms. Huff and I have had some joint meetings, which has been great, and look forward to more of those as we bridge the gap. And finally, I am having my second office hours this coming Saturday, April 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. until noon at the Panera Bread and Mosaic District. We had a great turnout last time, and I know there's been a demand, ask to have others added, so I will be looking to add some in other parts of the district as well, but for now, I have it this coming Saturday and the first Saturday of the month from 10:00 to noon. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out to Dr. Garza's listening tour this past Tuesday at Madison High School. It was a good crowd, some good questions, and I want to thank Dr. Garza for continuing to reach out to the community that way. I really, I know that people appreciate it, and I do too. I'll be at the PTA Reflection Ceremony tomorrow night, too, looking at all the wonderful artwork that our students have put together. Congratulations to all of you, you're already winners. And next Tuesday, April 5th, at 4:00 p.m., I will be speaking on behalf of the school board and, to the Board of Supervisors about our budget. And I, I do hope that we have lots of community support for that day and the next two days. The public hearings next week are very important. It is, as Dr. Garza said, it's very important that our funders at the county level, now that we have finished getting all that we can at the state level, understand how important the schools are to us, and I think they do, but they absolutely need to hear that from us next week. And I will end with this. I, I get, kids in Hunter Mill, I get notices from your principals all the time, and I just want you to know, if you didn't, that tomorrow is Western Wear Spirit Day at Vienna Elementary School. So, show your spirit and dress up for a rootin', tootin', good time. I just read, this, this meeting is adjourned, and right after this, about 10 minutes from now, we will begin our work session. Okay?